Oh, sorry. I'm eager by hatred to split me through.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Three point O is to approve the meeting agenda.
Next motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Any discussion? No, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Agenda is approved. Four point O are acknowledgements and recognitions, um, which we don't have many for this evening. Although I would like to acknowledge that it's nice to see you all. It's been a while.
It's been a while.
It feels like it has been so good to be back here with you.
Oh, you were gone in July.
Oh, mhm. So, yeah, so glad to be back. Good to see you. Lexi, thanks for coming on your, uh, summer break. Appreciate it. Um, five point O are recognition of visitors and community comments. Our community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the board on an item. It's included in the agenda in accordance with the guidelines printed at the end of the agenda. Uh, and we don't have anybody signed up to speak tonight, uh, but I would just like to recognize our visitors. Either here or in cyberspace today or in the future. Thanks for joining us for the August twenty twenty four business meeting. Uh, good to have you all like usual. Six point O are our reports. Six point one is the principal's report. Mr. Belangi.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Alright, so for my report tonight, it's just, uh, here we go, game on. Um, we've got people coming into the building already next week. Our five new teachers that are all coming into Satu Elementary will be here next week for a few days with some onboarding. Uh, just general school policies, practices, curriculum development, that type of stuff. So that's happening, uh, next week. We also have our kindergarten playdate. Um, on Wednesday, so that's any, uh, incoming family, um, those that are even, even if they're not registered yet, they can still come and meet families. Um, that's happening at Wednesday at three fifteen. Um, sports are going on right now, so we've got kids in the building. Student schedules were made live today in campus, so students can log on and check out their schedules. Um, and then just kind of a big huge thank you with all of the new teachers coming in. Reassignments movement, there was a ton of work happening to get everything ready. And we're almost there and we will be there, um, by Wednesday when those new teachers come in. Um, and then of course for our back to school workshop week with everybody, the following week on August twenty sixth. Um, getting ready for that first day of school on Tuesday, September third. And then just another, um, reminder to the community about our open house night on August twenty eighth of workshop week where they. Families can come in, meet their teachers, last minute paperwork stuff, get all that done and ready to go.
Did we do the feedback where a few of us said that, uh, we shouldn't have that bottleneck when you walk in? That overwhelming bottleneck of, uh.
I, I feel like last year we changed that last year and we were able to, I know that was feedback for the, the last year's open house. And I feel like we did change some things where.
Oh, okay.
Cafeteria.
I don't remember that. Did I not go orientation?
May not have, yeah, we moved everything into the cafeteria.
Oh, cool. Sounds great. Oh, I vaguely remember that. Alright, wow. Cool.
Great. Um, I had a quick question about the kindergarten enrollment. Do you have like a up to date snapshot of what that's looking like?
So we're currently at fifteen, um, enrolled, um, in kindergarten. So that's why we did, um, combine that then into one section. Um, and it's not a surprise to us. I know that the, the last year, the census report has even said just the registered number of kiddos. It's pretty low this coming year. It's a low bubble.
Three years in a row, it'll be low.
Yeah.
According to our demographic study.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so we're at fifteen right now. Um.
Do we know out of how many kids?
Um, I, off the top of my head, I don't have that number.
Only Portage kids.
I don't know off the top of my head. Um, I do know though that in our, especially our upper elementary grades, we've been having kids transferring in. Um, which is increasing those sizes, pushing thirty now, which is why we decided to split third, fourth and fifth grade into two sections. They were all one section last year, so.
Awesome.
Is it too early? Is it like spoiler alert if we ask who the kindergarten teacher is gonna be?
Uh, no, uh, uh, Ms. Ms. Hood, Ms. Autumn Hood.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Emily Roy is going to fourth.
Emily will be in fourth grade.
We're in charge here. We can ask this question.
Well, I know, but you know, it's like.
So I just, I, I just posted all the job posters on the eagle doors, so they're, they're public and live now, so you can share, so.
Okay, good.
Autumn will be in kindergarten.
He hasn't been here for a while.
Apparently.
Uh, Emily, uh, who was in kindergarten will be in fourth grade. Um, TJ, who was in fifth grade, is moving to fourth grade.
Okay.
And then our third grade sections will be taught by Chandler Litters, who comes to us from the charter school. And then Amanda Barris, who was here previously. Um, and then in fifth grade, Mindy Jacobson, um, will be teaching one of the sections and she's a veteran teacher. Most recently in Alaska, they've been here before. And then we were able to hire a brand new teacher right out of college, um, Ella Arvidson from Gust Davis. So she is coming up here. She'll be up here next week.
She's the niece of Tom Leslie.
Yes, niece to Tom Leslie, yeah.
Okay.
And they all have places to live, which is, uh, and then we also have, uh, Margaret Newton coming, um, into the elementary to teach Ojibwe language pre-K class. She's joining us. She's joining us for the new teacher stuff.
Yep, yep.
Perfect.
And how about, uh, the, yeah, the preschool enrollment? Do you have a sense for that?
We're max, we're, we're at capacity. Well, I, there's, I think we're at thirty eight, capacity is forty. Lazy be able to tell you there's, but there's a number of families who are. Committing but haven't signed yet and so I, from my understanding, we're full.
And that's between the threes and the fours.
Threes and the fours, yeah. Heavier with the fours, so that's why this year we're combining threes and fours in both sections. Last year we had a separate three, a separate four. But I think two thirds of them are four year olds and then a third is three, so didn't make sense to split.
The reason enrollments came in due to the closing of a childcare.
Yep.
Sure. So I, I think that, um, in six preschool class, he was in the four year old preschool. I think there were eighteen of them, if I recall. In his preschool class, just in terms of like.
I think the rule is twenty is twenty.
Numbers rolling into kindergarten.
And that's takes two adults to run twenty, so a teacher and a parent.
Yeah, sure.
That's, that's a lot of little.
We got a lot of little ones.
So the demographics come back after it's kind of a low point for kindergarten this year and then they kind of tick up.
If you remember back when we did our projections and we had that report. They projected that this year, next year and the year after, three years in a row, there were low birth rates in Cook County five years prior. So that the, the number of kindergartens in the county are smaller just overall, so we should, all three, four schools should see. The ramifications of that.
Uh, interesting.
And it's calculation based upon keeping the capture rate kind of consistent, right? So if our capture rate stays the same, we should have about sixteen, seventeen, eighteen kindergarteners for the next three years. But that's a, that's a projection, right? You never know what changes with housing and move in.
Yeah, I mean, with all the new housing coming in, there could be more families coming in, for sure.
But capture, you mean the kids that are of that pre-K age existing and whether they go to Oshie.
Correct.
Or Sprow, where they all got.
Correct.
That's not counting like a demo, just a.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, what's the total?
Could be even more.
Could be more, yeah.
Or it could be more based on where they end up going.
I mean, there's a hundred new units of housing going in the grammar area the next year and a half.
Those family or is that for?
All kinds of stuff. There's houses going in, there's apartments, couple bedroom apartments, whatever. Yeah. It's, it's gonna change it, probably, at this, at this point, too.
Buckle up, Principal Belangi.
Go.
Alright, well, thank you so much and good luck on the kickoff to the school year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
He was in Noka before. He can handle these.
He suffered a dream.
Alright, six point two is the superintendent's report. Mr. Lindholm.
Mister Chair, uh, just a couple of things that Josh did not touch on. Uh, in the thank yous for the shuffling, I want to specifically call out, thank you to Tom and the building and grounds crew. They've been moving. Stuff in the storage, out storage, all room to room for the last, well, all summer, but. Um, you might notice the hallways are also freshly painted, a lot of them, uh, and classrooms are painted. So that crew has been working really hard this summer, uh, to get our building ready to roll. Um, also a report that we've had contractors in the shop, the tech ed room this past week. Um, at the end of last week, I think, and now this week, and they are working to make the shop compliant for small engines. And, uh, are calculating to be done before workshops or by the time workshops start, so that's a celebration. Thanks to DSGW for helping us line that up and get it greased and, uh, underway. Two other things to mention, um, at least for the public. Uh, I do think that it is time, uh, for the community and us to have a conversation about the possibility of whether or not Cook County Schools wants to adopt a four day student week, uh, in the coming years. Uh, it's a really hot topic right now across Minnesota because the state is now accepting applications. They, they hadn't been for the prior ten years. Um, so now that the opportunity is there. Uh, there is a lot of conversation in the Arrowhead about the, how you need to, how far to the Arrowhead and the distance we all travel for sports and appointments and the like. If we all aligned on a four day week schedule and could stack game, you know, football, basketball games, travel games as much as possible on that day off and family appointments. If we could actually improve student attendance and staff attendance. Uh, so there's a lot of chatter and I think it's something that will require a lot of.
Who's this, who's chattering?
School district.
You guys?
Yes, yes, we're talking.
Administrators?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
And places like Carlton have adopted it as a strategy to recruit students and staff.
So Carlton has a four day.
This coming year, yeah.
School week, okay.
Yeah, yeah, Lake, Lake County has had it for years and years and, uh, very much likes it. Um, so I, it's not my decision, it's a we community decision and I think of a process for people to weigh, weigh in on that. Um, will need to be rolled out in the fall at some point. So that we can be making our decision in time to apply and then make a board decision.
I mean, I like the aspect of, of school attendance improving. Um, I think the issue would be a similar issue that we saw during COVID. Where childcare becomes an issue for, uh, elementary school kids. So we would probably need to have, I would think as part of the solution, something with that.
See, and I thought we were talking about going in the opposite direction. So like, you're saying they go four days a week. I mean, I totally agree with this and hence my major hostility. But, um, aside from that, I thought we were talking about our school days and how long they were and now you want to make it longer, right?
So I'm not entertaining a conversation right now. Um, when, when the time is right, we'll list all the pros and all the cons and, and we'll, we'll go through it. Right now I'm teeing up that it's, it's a relevant conversation across the state right now. Uh, cause the state has made it a possib- possibility. And in fact, there's a national trend going on right now, um, as a key strategy to attract staff. In a time of staff shortages. So, uh, whether or not we decide to do it, we'll, we'll decide later. Um, I just want to plan to see, um, so people have a chance to start thinking about it and, um, ponder it a little bit. Um, and then the last thing I want to, uh, mention for everybody that's tuned in is an event coming up August twenty seventh that we're really, really excited to be bringing to Cook County. Um, Aaron Walsh from Spark and Stitch is coming to provide education for parents and for educators about raising kids in the digital age and balancing screen time as a parent. And what's the brain science behind that and, and how does it affect brain development in children? Um, Aaron's father, Dr. David Walsh, has written numerous books. I've read, I've heard Dr. David Walsh speak. He's phenomenal. She's great. Um, she's coming on August twenty seventh. There'll be a community meal at five thirty PM in our cafeteria and a six o'clock presentation in the auditorium. Prior to that, there'll be a one o'clock presentation in our auditorium for all educators in Cook County from all four schools. Welcome, invited to come hear her presentation from one to thirty or so. Um, and for the five thirty and dinner and the six o'clock, uh, presentation, the YMCA is partnering with us in providing childcare. And a childcare option for parents that want that. So it's a partnership with.
No screens, it's a childcare, right? Oh.
Every kid will be given an iPad.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, no. Um, it's a partnership with Cook County Higher Ed and with Cook County Public Health. It's being funded through a public health grant. Uh, and then of course we're partners in this, so, um, really want to be pushing the word, I'll be pushing the word out next week about this event, uh, a little more heavily.
Send me a flyer so we can post the band's page, cause this, uh, this is a great program.
Yeah, it is. And parents have been asking for it and, you know, every parent needs to think heavily hard about that as, as we do too as educators, so great event.
Great. And that's it. Alright, any other questions or comments? Alrighty. Seven point O is, well, and also thank you to you and good luck with the rollout of the school year.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Alright, consent agenda. Um, is there anything that needs to be pulled? Well, you know what? Actually, excuse me, before we move on. Um, it's not on the agenda per se, but Lexi is still here and we have a standing item for her. Um, she provided a report to, uh, to Chris that he sent out in board notes. A couple of weeks ago, I was looking for that about a survey regarding cell phone use at school. Would you like to touch on that right now or anything else?
Laptop.
Or anything, or if you want to riff on that, any, any thoughts?
I put it together like the last week of school. I don't remember the exact day, but. And I don't know. I read through them like as soon as I kind of got them and since then I haven't looked at it, so. Mr. Lindholm, if you want to.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it really fast here. Is there a date that came out? That's what I'm looking for. I got the August second up, is that?
It might have been in June, what?
I read through the, the input and the input was very mixed.
Yeah.
Uh, I didn't see like a trend to pull out. I think the respondents were all high school, right?
Yes, I believe I sent it to like the incoming ninth graders, not any of the seniors that I recruited.
Um, a lot of students obviously want to have their phone accessible. It's not a shock. Um, so, you know, there were some good comments in there about, um, you know, students can put them away and not have them out in class. Be respectful of the teacher's policy and.
Is there a persistent kind of issue with cell phone? Like teachers are having issues with people on their phones in class or?
It, it wasn't, uh, a specific behavior issue that was at a high level last year. Um, I don't know. Yeah, I think the conversation is more around just like what research in society is realizing about. Screens and tech kind of.
Oh, it's kind of, it's kind of, yeah, a screen issue, gotcha.
And then MSB or the legislature.
Yeah.
Passed a law in the last session requiring districts to have a policy.
Oh, that's right.
So technically we do. It's in our technology policy, it's in our handbooks. Um, but to Lexi's survey, I mean, we, we have the obligation to figure out where are we going to draw the line in this end. And there's a lot of districts right now that are saying at least through eighth grade, put it away for the day. Uh, right, if you walk into our lunchroom, uh, you know, there'll be middle school kids in there looking at videos on their phones. A lot of people say that's not healthy. Put them away. Let's talk to each other, especially at the middle level age. High school, um, what I've heard from my colleagues is that's a little harder because high school kids often have a job or they're responsible for a sibling or whatever. So how to balance the put it away or put it in your locker, but yes, you can check it at lunchtime and yes, you can look for a message from work.
There's kind of, yeah, there's kind of that line between it being sort of this sort of tool that you have integrated into your life, life, you know, like sort of like.
Keep track of your homework.
Like mine's sitting in here, like I get that.
Yeah.
But it's the like, are you just using for entertainment or like, you know, gossip or whatever, where it starts to become like an issue? I did find the, it was senior seven twenty six.
Seven twenty.
Um, notes. I did a couple of like, um, informal inquiries on this. Um, I traveled to Costa Rica with the high school, with a contingent of high school kids, so we had a lot of time to chat. And I, this is one of the questions that I asked some of the students about. And it was kind of mixed. Some of them, I, a couple of them were pretty frank. They were like, I see no use for them. Just put them away, like no problem. And then there was mixed, but I think that one of the prevailing, um, themes that came out was like a di- desire for like a consistent sort of standard. Right? And they were like, you know, the, the rule doesn't get applied consistently maybe in differently. Like some teachers are more like, don't care. Some teachers have a really hard line.
Right.
And it's like, that's where some of the challenge they were seeing came out. And it's like, how do you find that place that makes sense? That you can sort of universally apply, you know? Which is kind of the challenge, so.
Oh.
For what it's worth. Some of the feedback I heard.
We have a policy, so we can do nothing.
Technically.
Yeah. And what's the policy?
Uh, well, it's in the hand, it's in the, it's in the handbook. Policy is, um, in the elementary school, they're away all day. They're not to be out at all. Um, and then in the middle and high school, during class, they're supposed to be away. Um, unless they're being used for an educational reason that the teacher is giving permission for. Um, and then if they're during passing time or during lunchtime, they're able to have the. Term practice, yeah. Term practice, yeah.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable.
So thank you for that, Lexi.
Yeah, of course.
Any, any other, aside from putting you on the spot about that, is there anything else that you are feeling compelled to talk about?
Not really.
Okay, I'm going in. You're just, you're going into your senior year.
The year.
Yeah, I'm graduating semester early as well.
Are you?
Yes.
Wow. Cool. Congrats.
Are you gonna go to college right away or?
No, I'm going on a Knowles trip, which is like an outdoor leadership program and it's eighty days in the Rockies.
Nice.
Awesome. I'm excited.
That's the need to heal your leg.
Yes, I do. I do need to.
It's better first, but we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, cool. Good for you. Cool, we'll, we'll, we'll look forward to your updates over the next few months. It'll go by quick, that's for sure. Great, well, thanks. And feel free, please stick around if you would like for the duration of this meeting.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so now we'll move on to seven point O, which is our consent agenda. Um, is there anything that needs to be pulled for, for the discussion? And if not, we just need a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill's opposed, motion carries. Alright, eight point O are discussion and action items. Uh, eight point one is to accept the July twenty twenty four expenditure revenue report in our packet. Um, Ms. Olberg is with us this evening. Is there anything you would like to highlight for us from the hot seat?
The only thing that I would draw your attention to is the fact that it's currently not closed out for the fiscal year. So it is, the numbers that are reported are year to date plus July. And that happens every year because things are still happening that have to go into the last fiscal year. So it looks a little bit, you know, funny, per se. Um, so as I do audit and year end things, the numbers will adjust slightly. It's mostly like a bill came in that was for June and so I still have to pay it. And last year, you know, there's a few, few things like that that happened. And so then once I can close all those things out, I can shut it down and then I'll have year end numbers. But as I peek at year end numbers for last year, they, they look decent. It looks like we landed where we thought we would land and maybe to the better a little bit. And I, that's what I'm hopeful for currently. I'm, that's what I'm seeing, but like I said, I haven't finished, um, doing all final year end bills. Cause I just looked and I saw some more for twenty three, twenty four, so gotta love it. So. So that's all I have for as far as explanation of my fiscal report.
Okay. Great. Any questions?
No.
No, I'll just point out that we budgeted for a slight loss, a slight decrease and so to come out even or better would be phenomenal.
Yeah.
Yeah. And some of that has to do with, um, catch up payments and, you know, last bits of extra funds and things like that, so.
There's not any more revenue that's going to be recorded for this year, is that right? Or it, or is it how?
There's.
Potential more expenses.
But there shouldn't be any more revenue and some of that has now been, remember I said last month that it would be moving buckets?
Yeah.
The buckets that did move, the buckets moved. So before it was general fund, ten thousand dollars. Now we've moved, you know, some of that, those funds to transportation. And some of those funds to, um, debt service. Uh, the only bucket that might change as far as, uh, revenue goes would be, um, community service. Cause there were some funds that were brought in under that umbrella that were maybe meant to be a student activity account because it was an activity that was.
Oh, yeah.
Hell in the summer that the students helped with, that was revenue for their, for their sport activity or whatever. So like the basketball, had a basketball camp and the students helped with that. So those revenues came in through fun four. And then we'll go to their student activity account for the year. So there might be slight differences, but nothing, nothing major.
Okay. Alright, great. Well, we just need a motion then.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Alright, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bill's opposed. Motion carries. Right, eight point two is to approve the, the par contract. Which is the Teamsters par professional twenty twenty four through twenty twenty six contract. And let's see, we've got a red line, um, Mr. Lindholm, if you want to take us through this real quick.
Just a quick summary on that. Uh, first of all, thank you to Rena. She helped, uh, negotiate and Teresa, of course, both Teamster contracts. So thank you for that. Par contract, um, increases wages for this coming year four percent. And in year two, two percent, so four and two. Um, four three B match of a thousand dollars for all of them. That was a big jump and a change for them. There was kind of a stair stepped, uh, benefit. Uh, increased health insurance to match teachers at seventy one hundred and eighteen, two fifty. Accelerated longevity, you know, how quickly they get it. Uh, and then the incentive to get certified to drive a bus, we doubled from fifty cents an hour to a dollar an hour, hoping that some of them will. Take, take the bait and get licensed to drive a bus when needed. And then we actually did quite a bit of language cleanup in this contract with PTO accrual, school closures, paid catastrophic leave. And then some notes that were from years and years ago and their, their appendix in that contract. So this is, it was a wonderful two meeting round. It was great.
It was very, um, congenial. I thought that, um, good discussions, general agreement of states.
Was the incentive to drive a bus come from you guys or come from them?
Uh, me.
Yeah.
I'm like, I need, I need some bus drivers, you know? Pay you an extra buck an hour if you just get the license.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was, I recall there was a. We had an issue with language that came up and there was a little bit of a conflict about, maybe it was around the closure, the reporting. Was that addressed? I think there was a grievance that we had to work through. Um, it was like whether or not you had to report to work if.
Yes.
I thought I had noticed, maybe that was addressed.
It was. That actually got captured in an MOU like a year ago.
Okay.
And so we just put that MOU language into the contract, so it's, it's there for good now.
Okay.
Yep, that got cleaned up.
And then I think the other thing that came up with this contract was, yeah, something about the PTO and the ability to use it or the accrual of it or. Being paid out and that, was that also something that, maybe we did that with an MOU once upon a time also. Uh, cause there was. We had, I can't remember the details, but there was a question about that.
There is some separation in PTO payout.
Yeah.
It's not all.
Uh huh.
We clarified it in hours.
In hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, like.
The workers work so many different hours within the contracts.
Right. Okay.
But they accrue their PTO in hours, so we wanted to clarify. Have they already voted for this?
They have already voted.
They approved it.
They approved it.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, great, um. Cool, um, thanks for, for doing that.
Yeah, you can see in the red line on page seven, that PTO change, um, if you're curious about that. It was. Tied to being able to, um, cash in a certain number of them for compensation. At around winter break and around spring break, when they lose a week of compensation. Um, so that language got tightened up. And you're correct, I believe that was in a P, in an MOU at some point.
Good memory, Ken.
Yeah, you have a really good memory.
All shirt for certain thing, but other thing. Good, well, thanks for, yeah, thanks for working on it and I'm glad that I read. It's always nice to just have it all be moved, so.
Yeah, I think the other thing that I saw was how much we've, you know, standardized our contracts and relationships, you know? Terms of every different group doesn't have different things and different vacations and different ways that they get paid out. It's like, really, I know that that's always been one of your goals, you got here.
Yep.
But it takes a couple of rounds to do that, but. it takes a couple of rounds to do that, but I can see where there's been a lot of movement on that, which makes it a lot easier to manage.
Yeah. Nice.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the para contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Okay, eight point three, and. Yep, to approve the Teamsters, uh, Bus Drivers Cooks Maintenance and Admin Assistant twenty four to twenty six contract.
So in this contract, uh, wages are increased four percent this, in year one, this year, three percent in year two. Um, they added a third step for all of the positions, so it used to be, it used to be one rate of pay, then it was two steps, and now it's, they've added a third step for all of spots, um, they established a sixty four hundred dollar minimum for people that have an individual health insurance, that was a big ask of the group of, and the paras actually already had that in their contract, so this brings them in alignment, um, with the para contract. Also increased longevity and acceleration of the years, increased, small increase to four oh three B. Um, clarified a bunch of language on catastrophic leave and pay for trip inspections and stuff. Um, and then also, and in this one too, we increased the incentive to get certified to drive a bus to a buck an hour, we're trying. But overall, again, a really, really great, uh, round of negotiations. Catherine Meyer, our relatively new bus driver, was the negotiator for this group.
Okay. Cool. Great. Um, and who was, what, did you do this one as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Well, and thanks to the groups, the, to the both of the, the unions that we, that, through unions, for sure.
Yeah, the, the, um, the guy with the, that did the negotiation.
Yep.
He's really good, it's a really reasonable.
Reasonable person.
Really reasonable, very congenial.
Great. All right, we just need a motion then.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
It's the final comment of gratitude to the Teamsters, that it's really good to be going into a referendum with all of our contracts, so.
Yeah.
Uh, that was a, a goal of mine, and, uh, I'm really grateful that we got everyone there over the finish line, so just time to start, start again in the year.
All right, fantastic, um, okay, eight point four is to approve the twenty four, twenty five, uh, Faculty Handbook. Which we've got here in the packet, um.
Mr. Balaji, any big changes?
Uh, in front of you, but I think it's highlighted in yellow.
Okay.
Not, not major changes, no.
Um. Could you talk a little bit about your, and perhaps this applies to all the uh, the handbooks, like what your process kinda looks like when going through these and updating them?
Sure, um. I think, um, I like to always, I want to always, um, make appropriate incremental changes every year, just to tighten up things. Um, and so I, nothing too major, but also I think is, as a general philosophy, schools are always changing, and so you gotta adapt your policies and practices to stay current, so that's a general perspective that I find myself taking when I look at handbooks.
The faculty and staff handbooks get weighed in on by Teresa and Kay and um, Josh, of course, Cindy Iverson, so it's kind of a team effort. Then the student ones are more you and teacher feedback and whatever.
Yeah.
Does it seem like these get referenced regularly?
Um, not so much with staff, um, what handbooks do make, how they make my job easier is like, when we have things stated and decisions have to be made. Um, I get to reference handbooks and policies as to why the decision was made, right, and then it's less of a personal thing, and it's more of a, these are the rules, and, um, yeah.
Totally. Good. Um, do you, whenever you're, um, handing these out and updating them, do you, is there some sort of like process that you do in terms of like, is it just like handed out, or do you like, is there a part of like a workshop or something, or you like talk about it a little bit or point things out?
So at workshop, we, what we'll do is, we'll highlight the changes, um, with staff and faculty. And so our students go, they're, they have a week to review it and then turn it in submitting it, saying that they understand and agree, um, but yeah, other than that, there's not a big.
Sure.
Not too much time.
Employees, is there kind of a going over the handbook or?
Yes, so, so last year we did not do that with new employees, but this year, one of our agenda items is like school policies and practices for staff, so we'll be touching on those things.
Next week.
Next week, yep.
Cool.
It's harder when they're, you're hiring on the fly in the middle of the year.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But every year it's kind of a rolling protocol in August.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries, all right, uh, eight point five is the twenty four, twenty five Employee Handbook. Also in the packet.
Same, yeah.
So, same deal with.
Like there were very many changes in that one.
Um, oh, this is just a question, and I, as I was reviewing some of these, I wondered about, um, would it be appropriate or helpful in the handbooks to add something about like our, um, like core values or like anything loaded from our like strategic roadmap kind of a thing, or in particular the like core values kinda stuff?
We could, um, I think it just comes down to where's your best return on, on, on investment of time and energy.
Yeah.
So, we actually have planning our professional development week to spend some time on that Thursday, I think. Monday and Thursday, actually, Monday strategic roadmap, and the Thursday, specifically our core values and diving into that, and, um, so, you know, what's the better return? Time spent talking and protocoling it or putting it in an document?
Sure.
Maybe both.
Yeah, sure, and I, I was thinking about it, maybe the thought came to me as I was looking at student ones in particular, cause perhaps those are ones that like, that, that's a document that goes home and parents look at, and it, I don't know, it's just like another avenue to communicate that, the teachers, it's a little different, but, um, there's just some, I'm just curious.
My experience tells me that very few people actually read. Right, so they're in trouble.
And then they're looking to see how, how many days am I gonna be suspended?
That's about it.
Fair enough, fair enough. Uh, okay, um, so employee handbook.
I'll make a motion.
Second, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. All right, eight point six is to approve the twenty four, twenty five middle school, high school handbook. So, and the packet, yellowed. Anything notable here, although we're getting into the students.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything too major.
Parking.
There's some language on parking. Uh, just to be more clear with parking expectations.
Sure. Little tightening up on some attendance stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Menusha, really.
Sure.
I have a question about, I remember two years ago, there was some discussion around like the dress code. And what's like the current like rules around dress code? Just like, eh, you don't have to read them all out, just like a kind of.
So, Lexi, I know last year, eh, eh, we, we did change, that was a big change last year, was.
Okay.
So, I, if I remember correctly, a year ago, I think in the handbook, there was a whole like even diagram of a person.
Yeah.
Like, we took a lot of that stuff out.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, and so I didn't, I, 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 that's maybe feedback too to follow up on, I, I don't know if there was any, I don't, I didn't, I don't remember any issues this past year with any dress code violations or issues with that, um, yeah.
So from like before you were here to now, there's been some change.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause I've noticed that definitely like walk around school, like barely anyone I know has been dress coded.
Correct.
Was, I don't know, from a teenage girl's point of view, and my friends and I were like, this is nice that our bodies aren't being kind of.
Policed?
Yes.
That was the intent of the changes made a year ago, and, um, you can thank Mr. Balaji for that. Um, we also last year, uh, made some significant changes and additions about restrooms and locker rooms and, um, we put those in writing in our handbook, wish it hadn't been prior, um, so now it's crystal clear of what our stance is on that, but that's been there for the, the whole year, and it's about new this year.
Awesome.
Great.
Oh, I have a random, uh, question about the dress code. I know a student, I won't say his name, but he bought a Modelo shirt, and I said to this random student, hey, Don, I asked you can't wear that to school. It's got beer, is that true?
That's true.
Oh, yeah.
I've had, I have had to flag. I've had the.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, I, I had to flag, um, plenty of students and plenty of staff with Voyager. Because they just, like, they work there and they don't even think about it.
No.
I'm like, no, you can't advertise beer in school, you just.
That one, probably a little more passable than just buying a Hello shirt.
I mean.
And we usually, we're, we're reasonable, we're like, don't wear that again.
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's not something that I know anybody is like, oh, we're like trying to catch people.
Yeah.
It's, if it's an issue, then. I see your beer shirt, I say, don't wear it again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so I had a, I just had a quick question, this, uh, regarding off campus lunch, um, so eleventh and twelfth graders can go off campus.
Correct.
Um, and it seems like ninth and tenth graders can go off for, in certain scenarios.
Yep.
Right, and I'm just kinda like, it doesn't seem to be really like addressed one way or another in the handbook, like that it's allowed, or it seems like it's not allowed, but there's kind of like, you know, an activity that happens every week that a lot of kids go to.
Yeah.
And like, how do we sort of like square that, or it's sort of like the idea that we're back to tenth aren't really eligible?
Yeah, so the practice, um, and we did do some work around the practice, not so much the overall policy, but we did change the practice of how we're gonna do things this year that will roll out the kids when they come back. Um, but so there are multiple organizations that provide opportunities for kiddos to leave school, um, under the supervision of adults with permission slips sign, signed by parents and those staff, um, folks, and, and last year, the issue, uh, was that those were happening on different days. And it was really hard for us as a school to manage that in an efficient way. And so the change in practice this year is that it's any sixth graders through twelfth grader who, um, in one of these organizations participates and fills out a permission form with that, uh, organization. That organization then will let us know that, hey, this kiddo wants to access our, our Wednesday lunch or whatever. They'll let us know, and then it's, um, expected that the students will then fill out a form with us um, that parents will sign, just so we have a record of who is leaving, and we're, we're I don't wanna say restricting, but we're making all of those opportunities happen on Wednesdays, one day between eleven twenty five and twelve fifteen, so. Um, with the old schedule, that means that high schoolers will, would have to go to advisory still for the first fifteen minutes, um, and then at eleven twenty five, they could be dismissed if they were on the approved list to go to one of these three organizations, it was last year that provided some of these lunches with kiddos. Um, and middle schoolers, uh, they would be able to leave their lunchtime um, fifteen minutes early, because at eleven twenty five, middle school's in lunch, high school's in advisory. So that's a, that's the new kind of practice around that this year, and again, it was more just to help us manage where everybody's going, and, uh, and then, yeah, so other than that, it's, uh, ninth, eleventh and twelfth graders are the um, only ones who have the open lunch policy every day.
Gotcha, so is there like a particular like criteria or something that the organizations like are, that you're evaluating to make sure that it's like, okay?
Yeah, so.
Or could it like, uh, I just.
Yeah.
A, a flip thing that comes to mind, it's like, well, you know, I'm an adult that, um, owns a restaurant.
Yeah.
And I'm inviting students to come eat here, you know, like.
So the.
I apply.
The, I mean, yes, and, and the, the thought on that is that any parent at any time can call their kid out and excuse them for a lunch if they wanted to do that. Um, and so, yeah, I, I hear you on that, the, the part of it is, is though that we need to know that, we need to know like what the organization, so right now it's the, um, uh, Cook County, uh, public, uh, our youth mental health counselors come in and work with some kiddos, North Point works with, um, has, provides lunch, and then the, um, evangelical free church provides, uh, free lunch for kids, um, and again, and once kids who are involved in those groups, uh, let us know that we require parents to sign up to say, yes, I know my kid's going there, I give them permission, um, that type of stuff, so, yeah, I mean, now, if, if a restaurant did create a group and the parents were okay with their kids going, it would say it's between eleven twenty five and twelve.
I would probably do toe the line there, I mean, but.
This is, these are groups that are doing service to families' kids in some way, shape or form, like the county is doing direct mental health services with kids. Yeah, that's different than a restaurant trying to.
Well, I, no, I, I know that some of it is service, but some of it's just lunch and it's fun to leave campus, you know?
From your perspective, I don't think that other people would say that.
Oh, okay. Well, it's the line that's being put out on social media, so.
Okay, well.
All right, well, just, just curious, you know, I'm just in the, kinda the perspective I come at it from is like, you know, if kids, if we wanna talk about having kids go off campus, you know, like what does that look like for kids, rather than I, it feels a little weird to me if like we're restricting them to like certain programming, and then we're basically funneling them to that programming if they wanna go off campus, so it's like, you know?
These three are the his, the, the historical ones that, since I've been here, I've been the ones who've been doing it, so that's why they're the ones that will work.
Is it common to have, uh, church groups be allowed to host kids off campus? Like other districts, cause I found that a little, you know, we had a little controversy with that a couple of years ago with one of them, and I was like, where one of them was kinda pushing our family in particular, and I said, well, hold on here, it's like, and it kinda was, I think, a little more like Dan's describing where it's, you know, people just want to go off to eat lunch, but I was like, this is a church group, but you know, not all families. That's not their values for all families, you know, it's different, so especially, you know, our kids from Grand Portage, so. I don't remember that being an issue last year so much, but it does kinda raise this thing for me like, well, yeah, why? Why are these church groups allowed to kinda do that? Because, you know, again, from our perspective, you know, in our community, churches had a certain agenda, and so nothing wrong with that agenda, but we, you know, we don't, we've had, that's what we experienced sometimes with that agenda, so, I don't know.
It's different everywhere is the answer. I, I, I can't give a general statement like that.
I, you know, I just, I mean, I had that discussion before here, but I just sort of feel like we have to really have a hard line between religious organizations and public school. And we have to be careful with that.
Well, it sounds like we are being though, like, if these kids can go off for this but not others.
Right.
Well, the county is one of the players, that's one of those social services.
The other two, the majority are church groups.
That's accurate.
I don't know, I'm not trying to, you know, shut it down or anything like that, but, well, right, so it's
and you, people have the right to take good out of school and go to, you know, a religious service or whatever, I can't remember what you call that, um, whatever time, like.
These are called religious release.
Yeah, release time, you know, and that's all protected stuff that people can do, of course, right? So that's not really the issue of like what people are leaving to do, I mean, kinda the angle that I have on it is like, well, why don't we just let all the kids leave then? You know, for gonna leave, some, you know, if, some of them are gonna leave, why don't we let them all leave, you know, I don't know. Um, just from like an equitable standpoint, but, uh, they, that's, uh, that's a simplistic way to look at it. I understand that, it's a more complicated issue than, than that, but, you know.
I think as a board, uh, the, some things to think about is, you know, most districts, the vast majority don't have open lunch because of liability.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, we lose control of students. You know, we we lose control of students when they go out the door and from a board's perspective, that's an important variable to weigh and there's definitely a maturation difference between a ninth grader and a junior and a senior. So our ninth and tenth graders must be under the supervision of adults with permission forms. So we're literally saying to the parent, we're handing the kid to that adult and back to us from a legal standpoint and a liability standpoint.
Oh, that's why it wasn't an issue last year, because he wasn't in ninth and tenth grade, he could do what he wanted, I get it now, okay.
Juniors and seniors can walk out the door with permission from the parent and 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 they aren't under the supervision of an adult or a organization, so there's layers of, you know, thinking through this with protecting the the safest position would be, nobody leaves.
Sure, for sure. Which we've had, we've had that be the rule here and not the too distant history. And then it started, it was like. We were kind of all across the the line of the pendulum or kind of been a more medium spot now, but.
I don't know.
Okay, well, eh you know, eh food for thought and thank you for talking about that and kind of paying attention to it, so. Um alright, any other comments or questions? If not.
Where were we, middle school, high school?
Middle school, high school.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Uh eight point seven is to approve the twenty four twenty five Sawtooth Elementary Handbook.
I think that was pretty much just dates.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't really see me. So I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Eight point eight is to approve the twenty four twenty five preschool handbook.
Did we have one of those before?
Next is the twenty four twenty five in utero handbook.
And is this a separate handbook? Because it's like considered community ed prof. And more hand, even more hands on from the parents, special considerations.
Right, and their calendars still differ and all kinds of stuff.
Sure. Okay. If there aren't any questions, we just need a motion on this one too.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for all your work on all of those handbooks, we appreciate it. Alright, um nine point O is personnel, nine point one is to approve the new hires, resignations and leave of absence slate.
Mr. Chair, I'll explain one quick thing in here, um the leave of absence for Amanda Beal um is actually being addressed by like three different English teachers, um and she'll be gone for three quarters. Um so this brings back Sue Nelson, a retired teacher. Um Kitty Balaji will pick up a couple of classes here and there and then another English teacher will pick up another and one of our special ed teachers has already covered some of that, so it's kind of a smorgasbord of people covering that leave of absence. The math one is straightforward. And that's also for a leave of absence. And the others are just straightforward hires.
So is the, in the case of the English, um if there, we're gonna start off the year with. With Amanda.
First quarter.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and if she leaves second quarter and so whenever she has a baby.
Sure.
Is this like Chris O'Brien that's like, is this the Chris Chris O'Brien that's?
No, not that, that's not that one, no.
It's like a younger one. I was just kind of like, really? Okay.
Retired engineers.
That's a partner of one of our bus drivers.
Okay, well, great, yeah, um like somebody made a point before, it's nice to have more hires than resignation, resignation on the list, so.
Well, we need to say thank you to Bill Hacker, he's been driving for ever.
First first bus was a dog sled.
He's been doing that portage run for who knows how long.
I'm gonna miss his voice on the radio. Morning to everyone on the highway.
It was the morning cheer on the radio. So thank you, Bill, for your many, many, many years of driving our kiddos to and from Portage.
Yeah, and is um the new hire is uh or Romero, are they gonna do the the same route?
I honestly don't know, it's get shuffled around so much. I think so.
Alright, cool, well, we just need a motion on this one then.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed, motion carries, alright. Um ten point O is to adjourn into closed session. And I don't have the statute written down, but we're adjourning into closed session session for the statute that says that we can do that to evaluate the uh superintendent superintendent's performance, so. Um we're gonna adjourn here at six PM. Um yeah, I suppose we need. Okay, you can second it. Alright, um. All those in favor? Aye, okay, so we're adjourning into closed session at six PM.
And we will stop the recording.